Tuesday, April 11th, 7:03 PM. Gregory Tizolo Chair. With me we've got the full board with the exception of William Goze. Let's see if he can make it. Let me see, we're just going to take care of a couple quick things first. Bill, we're on, we're rolling.
We already.
Sorry, I'm looking for. We'll talk about item three, the Fowler Street Extension, request for release from covenant. First, a small administrative thing we've got to take care of here?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just on the Fowler Street Extension, oh, the applicants are here. They've posted the necessary funding for the road and they want the release from the board so they can go ahead and sell their properties right now.
Very good.
The town council is reviewing the language, it's not, I don't have it to sign at the moment, but if the board could approve it and then we could have the board, I think we'd only need three to sign it at one point during, perhaps soon next week or something, stop by and sign it, we could release the properties. And that's pretty much all we have on that. So we're.
And Wayne, we see your letter here.
So, yeah, so the applicant submitted a request to release the covenant. We do still maintain a $3,500 surety bond and I have talked to the applicant and they're willing to not request release of that until basically the remaining items come to subdivision. Some bounds, some signs, decrease, some blowings, even they actually paved the road today. So we're almost there. So I have no issue with the release of them.
Okay. William, we're talking about item three, release of lots from Fowler Street. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, probably should, probably should get in. There's one more issue, Mr. Chair, I neglected to mention. The applicant's covenant required that the subdivision be completed within, was it two years?
Two years.
Three years. And you're coming up on that in, is it June?
Up now.
Up now. So what also, we would request the board, the board would be willing to extend the covenant for six months? A six-month extension of the covenant as well to complete the subdivision.
Yeah, so the request is for an extension of the subdivision approval by the board.
Is the board will be willing to entertain an additional? So it'd be two separate votes we need.
The big issue that was remaining was really paving of the road. That'll be done, was paved today. So all the other things are minor, so I personally don't have an issue if it's extended a little bit.
That'd be a year from the expiration date, I guess, which were already passed?
Two thousand and fifty.
Or a year from today?
Two thousand and fifty? No. Two thousand and sixty. Okay, so it sounds like.
All right, so you'd need, you need more, you need a year from now?
You need one day after the, after the release was really, but we'll have the work done in the next. Everything can be done.
Everything's done, the road down the hall, everything's done except that, you know, the street side that we have, the bar that we had and after the ad built from the landscape. So everything's done. The grill hot tub's all in, all the drains is done.
So maybe extend, request to extend it till April 2018? That's not quite a year from June.
Yeah. It will be that.
How many houses do you have left?
Just one.
Any concerns about the extension? Okay, I'd like to move that we release from covenant lots one, two, three, and four, Fowler Street, as requested by the applicant here.
Second.
All in favor? That's five and six. Six in favor. I'd like to move also that we extend the time period of the subdivision approval until April 30th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor? Again unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we do the minutes later?
I don't have any minutes.
Don't have minutes?
I don't have any.
That's just, that's just a running thing on here, isn't it?
It's a gag.
Just trying to get me to.
Look for the minutes.
All right, so I'd like to reopen the public hearing for the site plan and special permit amendment for the Mill and Main project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're here before you today, with the same team, with the exception of Chris Rickman, who's from lighting consultant, who was not here the last time, but has been involved. We took all of the questions of the town engineer and any of the questions from last time and we addressed a number of them. And so without further ado, we're going to, we're going to look at those changes that we made and where we are today.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jade. Thanks to you again.
Hello.
The two primary changes that we made in response to the meeting last time were, the first change was we changed the direction of the entry drive, so we changed it from a two-way entry to a one-way entry. So we've now gone to the existing configuration in this location. So we have one way in and we also added, we removed two trees in this location here to eliminate the visual wall. First of all, this comment should reflect that we create a visual through connection and a physical connection so that when you're on Main Street coming across the plaza, there's an immediate connection from the plaza to this sidewalk, which is ADA compliant, that then goes you up to the building for you. Those are our primary changes.
Thank you. Yes.
I guess just for the board's records, since we'll be late here, so the applicant made a amended site plan resubmital. We issued a comment letter on March 15th. They submitted response to those comments with waiver request on March 28th. At the last hearing, we talked about, the only issue that we had with the waiver request was the width of the driveway. The applicant responded by offering to turn that into one way, as Jade just described. I think that was a very amenable, amenable compromise. We reviewed his revised plans. We issued you guys another final comment letter, comment response letter on April 7th, and the applicant has finalized his response dated today. They've modified the one-way entrance, as Jade has indicated, to a 16-foot, modified a couple of stop signs, and provided some additional drainage backup calculation for the board's record. It sounds like there may be one minor change that may need to be made, either in the calculations or in the plan, so I guess I'm fully in support of approving this with this maybe be out of condition that a revised plan be presented that meets my satisfaction.
So the drainage narrative that was referred to in the April 7th letter?
Yep.
Has been, that's been satisfied with this letter from today?
Yeah, they provided that. I guess I'd just ask that we just condition it that I've had a chance to review that and just make sure that that's all sufficient, but it seems like.
And a, and an accompanying plan.
Correct.
Right.
If we just add a condition like that, I'm perfectly content with that.
Is that a call, Bill? Are we going to require to submit a set of milar documents for this?
When the, when they say, I'm sorry, do you need something?
Will we be required to submit a set of milars for this again? The original filing?
Yeah, because they were quite, we'll have to talk about the pages that are, were all the pages affected on the.
The amended submission.
There's only half a dozen sheets.
This is basically a scandalous set of documents.
Yeah, then, then, yes.
So I guess what I was going to suggest was when we submit those milars for the board's signature, don't include any, if they're in our area, comments from VHB's final review.
That's correct.
They can include it with that.
That's correct. And typically the way we do it, we can talk about this after, but we've been trying to figure out the best way to either make copies of the signed ones that you provide them to us as a final, for the final release, and you give us the copies of the plans that are in, you keep the milars, but we can, we can catch that after.
So just for my clarification, with this being a amendment, there's still an existing site plan that has a list of, that has conditions and so forth, and those are still applicable?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. All the conditions of the previous site plan would remain in effect, and all the approvals that were granted earlier, there was primarily on the other side of the project, a lot of this concerned, would remain in effect. This is only for the one affected area.
Well, I guess, I guess we need a, oops, some folks are still looking here. One of the questions I had last time, and I think Mr. Rickman is here today, and I see there's now photometric plan accompanying the set, it's a little tough to read, maybe if you, or anyone could.
Do you want to do a review?
That would, I think that would be helpful.
Happy to do it.
So, in preparation for the design, and I reviewed the town's major zoning ordinance and requirements for lighting, and speaking as a professional lighting designer, I was delighted to find that you're now spinning out endless series of numbers, the general directions the lighting designers want. Be friendly to the environment, use only what you need, and don't light the neighbors' problems. Your discretion. So with that being said, Chris Rickman at Rickman Lighting Consultants, we've been doing professional lighting design for nearly 40 years now. I'm honored to be asked to participate in this project. We have a very simple vocabulary of fixtures. We have a cutoff post-top LED fixture that is IES full cutoff, so we'll plug into the pole. We have a matching baller, which has been deployed, and I'll show you on the plan where these different things go. We have hostularies applied, like moving vehicles and pedestrians crossing the other way. We have added a cutoff wall pack in many of the areas of the site due to historic evolution of the site. I think the sidewalks are so narrow up against the buildings, and some roads and parking lots, that there really is no place to put a post light. So we're proposing to put matching full cutoff LED fixtures on some of the façades of the buildings, and also to address the question, we could partner emergency dress lighting in the condition of a power failure outside the egress doors, so we also. We have at one entry, which is within the scope of canopy, which has two downlights in them that are not full cutoff, but they're downlights under a canopy, so I would consider them a good consideration, just to give some orientation to that new entry in the building. We do have a limited number of tree, low-owattage LED tree uplights, and. Although, reverse order, the tree uplights, although there are a number of trees around the site, the tree uplights were specifically deployed to address the desire to create a view corridor in through the site going all the way back to the back end. The cutoff wall packs, this particular sidewalk is so narrow, there's no place to put a parking there. A post-top fixture here, likewise right here, and then we have fixtures at building entries all through the site, except where, of course, here there are already emergency fixtures. The ballers are in pairs, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, particularly where there's the possibility of pedestrians crossing and vehicles, and there's four up here at the end where you have the secondary exit out of the side. The post-top lights are the pink ones, which are deployed around the site, not only to provide light for the paths, but also for the roadways, drivers through, so the design is basically oriented towards pedestrian, human orientation in sight. There are 3,000 K LEDs, so they will be, in my opinion, very variable warm color to enhance the breakwork there and make it look somewhat historic in its feeling, as opposed to a really authentic white 4,000 K LED, which I personally don't like, so.
Just a general question, I guess, I understand there's a broader scope of intent throughout the overall site. Is it your intent to use this lighting vocabulary on the entire Mill and Main project or just in this area?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for lighting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any other general questions on this project at this time? Are we, how are we doing, Bill? Are we in?
No, we wa, Mr. Chair, Wayne and I, we walked the site again today, just to review what the last proposal was, and it completely works. I think going one way was key. I think that made, that took what was a bad, would have been a bad entry onto Main Street, and I think it really improved the situation. I think, and walking down, you know, where the fence will be removed, it will be a very inviting campus, and the new, the new structure, the new front there looks very nice, and I think. We've looked all over, I couldn't, I think it's, I think we've done, they've done a good job.
So, so from your, your opinion, it looks like we're in position to, to move on this. So I'd like to move that we approve the site plan and special permit amendment for the Mill and Main property.
Second.
As presented.
Second.
All in favor? Six in favor and none opposed.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's it, right?
We'll be in touch with the paperwork and, and Matt and I'll get in touch with you tomorrow. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, that's, that's a tricky easel there, Jade.
You can have it. We've got to work on that situation.
Mr. Chair, if I may, in terms of printing materials for the 129 Parker, I know last time, I didn't want to keep printing materials if you had them. I've printed extras of everything if we need them, so I haven't, I knew a lot of you had them from before, so I'm not, I didn't distribute everything if you need it, et cetera, if you like anything, and I think.
Thank you. Do you have those?
I do have your little sheets, sir.
My little sheets.
Your little sheets.
You can keep one.
I'll have you do it in Jamaica.
It's a little cheat sheet, I'll put it that way.
Nice.
Is this a quiz?
That's a quiz.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
It's just usual, okay. It's just one. You can, you can do whatever you.
No, I think it's great.
Right. Actually, we should have this for the board. Sure, we can. I just want. Having documentation is not bad. So we will reopen the site plan review for 129 Parker Street, as well as the three special permit requests, drive-through use, multifamily dwelling, and continuing care How are you? So I guess what we'll do first is, if I could ask the applicant to just kind of summarize your, what you're hoping to cover tonight, I'll talk, I'll go to the, to Wayne and John and add any items. I understand there's some information from VHB or some review we'd like to add, so we can just kind of tie everyone into an agenda for the night, and we can try to plan everything accordingly and make sure we get to everything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Angelo, Pat, and Zarrow, and the other applicants. This evening, we were sort of following Town Planner's lead, and we were prepared to address the items that the audience here have listed in an email that we were taking over the course of the week. We would like to make a brief presentation or a presentation first on external traffic. That's a topic that this, that this board hasn't heard from our traffic engineer. We would like to make a presentation from Hawthorne that we had discussed a couple weeks ago, one of those ones that was postponed from the snowstorm hearing, and the representative, Mark Owen, from Hawthorne, is here to make the presentation. Then we are prepared to make a presentation on landscaping. And then if there's time, there might be some discussion on operations. We're ready to get right into the, if you need a presentation, of course, everyone's here and available to address any questions over the board. Is that sort of what you plan to receive?
Yes, yes, we've, and we discussed it prior a little bit, and do the best we can do, but it gives us a roadmap.
Now, if you're ready, I'll.
I'll just add too, that from discussing briefly with Wayne, it seems that VHB has a, would like to respond or contribute to the discussion of the traffic, so we can include them after your traffic presentation before we move on to another topic, if that works.
Yeah, we'd like to address that, sure. In all facets, delighted, but.
Very good.
I'll turn it over to Jason.
Good evening, from the board and from staff from the public. Good to be back. Before I jump into my presentation, I will say that we received our peer review letter from VHB regarding our traffic study only a few hours ago. There are not many big outstanding items there. That said, I haven't fully reviewed that peer review in detail yet, and may not be able to respond to everything, and it's only been a few hours. But I think there are certainly many parts of that peer review that we still be able to address in our discussion this evening. Also, just a little housekeeping, I brought two copies of all of the boards, so the boards here, for the public, and the board is seeing, are identical. So we'll take a little bit extra time just to flip, because that's a board, but that would be a useful thing. So there are still some, I know we've talked about some of the internal traffic at previous hearings, and I'm sure we'll touch on some of those issues tonight as well. I would like to start really by running through and giving a summary of our process and our study for the off-site traffic, and then as we, as we get into it, I'm sure we'll touch upon some of the internal traffic items as well. So we've submitted a traffic study in conjunction with this site plan application. This is really an updated traffic study. It updates the traffic study that the board reviewed and looked at as part of the 2013 proposal, which itself built on a prior study from 2006, I believe. And we had also, as part of the conceptual plan development, about a year ago, had submitted a preliminary traffic evaluation. So that said, the graphic up here, kind of goes through all the, identifies all the study intersections. It's basically the same set of study intersections that we looked at, or that was looked at three years ago, or four years ago at this point, at the 2013 traffic study. So that includes several intersections along Route 117, Gray Road, starting at the west end, at Main Street, at Sedbury Street, at Thompson Street, and Parker Street. Going up and down Parker Street, the study intersections included the southern Vosil Road intersection, Old Marlborough Road intersection, the northern one. Then we've got South Street, and North Street, and Field Street in the vicinity of the project site. Obviously, the 117 Parker intersection is a major one. We looked at Parker Street, at Waldham Street, right near the corner store there, as well as the traffic signal at Parker Street and Waldham Street, Powder Mill. And then one additional intersection that we looked at was going further north on Parker Street at Haynes Square, Route 27 at Conover Street. That last one up farthest north, as well as the Route 117 and Thompson Street, were both additional intersections that were not included in the traffic study four years ago, but through the conceptual plan development, back when we did the preliminary study about a year ago, the town's peer reviewer, VHB, had requested those two additional intersections we added to the study. So as part of our study, we collected all new traffic data at every intersection. So, as part of our study, we collected all new traffic data at every intersection. That included weekday, morning, afternoon peak periods, as well as a Saturday midday peak from 11:00 to 2:00. In addition to that, we collected some additional roadway data on both Great Road, 117, and Parker Street in the vicinity of the site. And for the preliminary traffic study about a year ago, that preliminary evaluation, we didn't collect traffic data throughout the entire site, but rather, we just did roadway, roadway traffic volumes on Parker Street in the vicinity of the site. What we saw between the 2015 and the 2016 data was relatively consistent. There was some slight growth there, but pretty, pretty consistent year, year over year. So, one of the first things that we did as part of the existing conditions evaluation was, we took a look at the crash data. We looked at the five most recent years on record, and that data came from Mastock, who in turn gets it from the RMB. So, it is a comprehensive crash database there. So, we looked at the crash data at each study intersection. The only intersection that was experiencing a crash rate higher than the, than the average crash rate. And when I say the crash rate, it's not just the number of crashes that occurred there, but it, it relates the number of crashes with the amount of traffic going through the intersection. So, it sort of normalizes that the crash rate per million injured vehicles. And then Mastock publishes average crash rates throughout the state, statewide, and also within each Mastock district for both signalized and unsignalized intersections. So, we then reviewed all the crash data, looked, looked for some patterns, things like that, and calculated the crash rate over the past five years at each of the study intersections. The only intersection that was above the crash rate was the intersection of Haynes Square, Route 27, and Concord Street. That intersection, I'm sure everyone in the room is familiar with it. There was, it averaged about 4.4 crashes per year, and had a crash rate slightly above the average crash rate, 0.87. The Mastock District 3 average crash rate for unsignalized intersections is 0.65 crashes per million injured vehicles. Of those crashes, there was only one injury crash, so it appears to be that most of them were relatively minor crashes, property injury. All right, so. No, you can not do that. So, a big piece of our analysis at each of the study intersections and at the project site involves future traffic projections. So, we projected traffic volumes seven years out into the future. That's consistent with Mastock guidelines and typical industry practice. We basically looked at the future projections, first without the project, what we call the no-build scenario, as well as the build scenario, when, when we then add our project traffic on top of that. So, to get to the future no-build traffic volumes, we increased traffic volumes 1% per year for the seven-year period. And, and we also looked at other specific projects going on in town. The most notable, of course, is Mill and Main, and there were several others. I had conversations with both Wayne and Bill, Bill Numzer and Wayne and me, the town engineer, town planner, just reviewing the other projects going on in town. The other things were generally minor in nature. We also reached out to the planners in Concord, Acton, and Sudbury, and Stowe, and got some information there on, on projects nearby that might be sending traffic through, through our town. We also looked at other, other roadway and infrastructure improvement projects that would be happening independent of this project. And specifically, there's a few things going on in town. Obviously, the Asprey River Rail Trail, construction began on that last year. And there's a few other things in the larger area as well. I know up in Acton, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is currently under construction as well. Other than that, there wasn't really any other planned infrastructure or roadway improvements in the town. So, once we had a good solid baseline of our future no-build traffic projections, we, we ran a trip generation analysis for our project site. So, in developing these future traffic projections, we really took the projections that we had done as part of the preliminary evaluation a year ago as part of the conceptual plan development, because the project really hasn't changed significantly since then. It's still the same square footage, still the same number of units, all that, as what was approved at town meeting back in October. But just to remind everyone, we did our trip generation analysis based on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They publish, you know, how many trips per thousand per unit, or for the apartment, how many trips per number of units, and that sort of thing. Once we, the, the base trip generation calculation is done, we then, we, there's a few different types of trips going to the site. The first would be pass-by and/or diverted trips. So, these are trips that are already on the roadway network. Basically, a pass-by trip is someone's already driving along Parker Street, they decide to go in, do their grocery shopping, or wherever, and then they continue on their way on Parker Street. So, it's a, it's a trip going in and out of the site, but not necessarily a new, a new trip, new vehicle in the roadway network beyond the site driveway. Similarly, a diverted trip would be someone who's driving along 117, maybe commuting into and out of from Boston. And on their way home, they now bang a left and head down Parker Street into the site, they come back out, and then continue along 117. So, that's a diverted trip. Again, it's, it's additional, they have additional turning movements at one or two intersections, but really, a car that's already on the roadway network, once you get a little bit further away from the site. So, that's pass-by diverted. We also looked at internal trips. So, these are trips that would be entirely within the site. Someone living in the apartments, hey, I need to go grocery shopping, they're going to walk to the supermarket. They're not driving on any of the roadways outside the site. They're not even driving on the site. They're just walking. So, we went through all those calculations, again, following ITE guidelines, Mastock guidelines, typical industry practice. And basically, what, what we found was, you know, the, the proposed site is expected to generate about 370 trips during the morning peak hour, about 930 new trips during the afternoon peak hour, and about 1,440 trips during the Saturday peak hour. So, this table provides a nice comparison of what we're currently proposing, the, the expected trip generation at our site, and that's just really the middle row, the, the current 2016 plan, right here. We compared our expected trip generation to both the, the previous 2013 proposal, as well as the 2006 proposal from, many years ago, just sort of as a baseline for comparison, kind of see where we're at, see where we are, where it can stand. Now, these numbers are a little bit different than, than the numbers I just mentioned, because the, the numbers I just spoke about were the, the net new trips. What's being shown here is the net external trips, which includes the pass-by and diverted trips. The reason for that slight difference is that even since the 2013 study, the guidelines for, for calculating the pass-by trips and what's an appropriate credit to take for that have changed. So, by including all of the, the pass-by and diverted trips in, in these tables, we get a better apples-to-apples comparison because of that change in guidelines. And I could go into some details there, but I don't think it's of particular interest for most people in the room. So, the, the summary is that we have a, pretty much during every peak period, and, and the daily periods included, we've had a drop in traffic, or less new traffic is projected compared to either the 2013 plan or the 2006 plan. The one exception to that is the Saturday midday peak hour, when compared to the 2006 plan. The reason for that is the 2006 plan included a lot of industrial uses on the site, certainly something a lot different than what's currently proposed, and, and I don't think the town's interested at all to have any industrial use here. But that said, industrial uses primarily employees, people don't work too, too often at industrial sites on Saturdays, hence, we've got more traffic compared to that proposal. That said, on a daily basis, and during the weekdays, we're, we're less traffic than either the two previous proposals. All right, so once we've developed our future trip generation projections, we then distribute that new traffic onto the roadway network. And for that, we really look at a few different things. We primarily look at existing travel patterns, and we've got traffic data at every intersection in the study network. We know how many cars are going in one direction versus the other. So, that's the primary source. The other, the other source of data here is something called journey-to-work data. Basically, data from the US Census saying, okay, well, residents who, who live in Maynard, where are they working? And, you know, people work in Maynard, people work in Concord, people work in Boston. And, and based on that, that data, we can say, okay, well, people working in Boston, we know they're not going west, right? We know, we can generally assign what roadways that traffic is going to be. So, that said, you know, we, we did different trip distribution patterns for the, for the various uses on the site. Most of them were pretty similar, again, based on existing traffic patterns. So, we, approximately 25 to 30% of our traffic to and from the south on Route 27, approximately 15% of our traffic to and from the west on 117, approximately 10 to 15% of our traffic to and from the east on 117, approximately 20% heading north on Powder Mill, towards Concord and Route 2 in that area, and approximately 20 to 30% continuing up 27 in the two Actons. So, at this point in the study, we've, we generated the future traffic volumes, both the baseline and the build condition. We've distributed our new traffic onto the roadway network. You know, all along at this project, we've been talking about a traffic signal at the front, at the primary driveway. We did what's called a signal warrant analysis. Basically, there are guidelines that say, you know, based on these traffic volumes, if you're below it, there's no way you should install a signal. If you're above it, you could consider a signal. So, that's something that we wanted to, to go through and just verify that, yes, the signal is appropriate here, and, and it is a necessary thing both for, for safety as well as operations. And, and of course, the signal warrant, it is warranted in this primary set of traffic. We also then did an intersection capacity analysis at all the study intersections, and basically, that, that's a, a calculation, that, that's an analysis to develop average delays per vehicle, queue lengths, and then we assigned a qualitative level of service to that, level of service A through F, with A obviously being, being the best, with very low delays, and, and F being high delays and long queues generally. There are different sets of thresholds for signalized and unsignalized intersections, just because people generally have different expectations at a signalized intersection versus unsignalized. People are generally more patient at a signal, and therefore, those delay thresholds for the corresponding levels of service are, are just as important. So, we did the traffic analysis at all of the intersections during the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour, both, both during a weekday, as well as Saturday midday, midday peak hour. And what we found is that at the majority of the intersections, our traffic can be accommodated with relatively small impacts and increases in delays. There were several locations that we identified as, you know, being impacted, and we need to do some mitigation. A lot of that mitigation was outlined and already agreed to in the MOA, the memorandum of agreement, which, which the group has already agreed to do, and is committed to doing that. We've also recommended and suggested some additional things above and beyond what they had already agreed to in the MOA. And again, I'd like to just remind everyone that the, the mitigation actions and the infrastructure improvements agreed to in the MOA really go all the way back to the 2006 traffic study and, and proposal, and there were some adjustments and, and changes in the, for the 2013. But really, the majority of that goes, goes all the way back to the 2006 proposal. As, as we've discussed, we're generating less traffic than, than either of those two proposals, and we've committed to not just the same amount, but, but even some additional actions as well. So, now I'm going to get into that. Just one second. Okay, so we're going to start reviewing the off-site intersection improvements. We'll start at the front door improvements along Parker Street, and work our way up So, for context here, north is to the, to the right side of this plan. This is Parker Street here in front of the site. And then we've got sort of the, the site plan itself sort of locked in. Just for context and reference, you know, this wasn't the final version of the site plan, even though it was officially submitted, and there's been additional revisions, but it, it provides context for, for where these improvements are. So, essentially, what, what we're proposing is a new traffic signal at the primary driveway. We'll be widening on the west side of the road, on, along the project site, really holding the, the east side of the road without pushing out existing curbs line there. And the widening really is intended to do a few things. Provide a northbound left turn lane into the site, provide a southbound right turn lane for vehicles into the site. We've also gone another 10 feet of widening to provide five-foot bike lanes, consistent with the town's complete street policy and sort of general industry trends and practices there. As I'm sure many of you folks know, Parker Street today has, I think, only one to two foot shoulders on both sides. So, I mean, there's, there's significant, you know, the, the roadway widening that's being proposed goes well beyond the existing right way, and the, 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 to, to the town to extend the existing public right of way. In addition to the traffic signal at the primary drive, there is, what was really just off the, it's hard to see because the, the pavement work kind of ends really right at North Street, but there's an existing crosswalk right at North Street and Field Street, and we'll be proposing an RRFE, that's a rectangular rapid flash beacon. Basically, there's a few, two of them in town as part of the, the rail trail, including a few just out here on Main Street. There's another one at the Route 117, crossing at the Asprey River Rail Trail. Basically, there's a push button, and someone pushes it, and, and the lights start flashing. It's not a red light for cars, but it really gets your attention as a driver, and, and studies have shown very high yield rates. So, you think that's going to improve safety and improve that pedestrian quality. So, the, these Parker Street plans, improvement plans also include some improvements at the Parker Street, Old Marlboro Road intersection. And really, that intersection today, that's not really a capacity improvement or anything like that, but, but it's really a safety and traffic calming kind of improvement. like that, but it's really a safety and traffic calming kind of improvement. As you come down Old Marlboro Road today towards Parker Street, right at the intersection, it's just a very wide opening. There's not really clearly defined lanes, either exiting or entering. So what we do is basically this green area here on either side of the road is the areas that today is paved and we'd be narrowing the roadway and clearly defining those lanes. And while we're talking about Old Marlboro, it's showing up on this plan in the context of the overall Parker Street plan, but we can also just show a blow up of that intersection so everyone understands what we're proposing to do there. So again, all these areas that are shaded on the plan are existing paved areas that we would be narrowing the roadway, still providing, you know, sufficient safety there. I think it's either 28 or 30 feet we propose there, certainly sufficient for any trucks or any, not necessarily large trucks, but UPS trucks, delivery vehicles, that sort of thing, from accessing the roadway. So that's really, that in conjunction with a few other improvements which I'll get to shortly along Old Marlboro Road are really intended to serve some traffic calming. Certainly, we don't want visitors going through that residential neighborhood to access the site, particularly those vehicles coming from the east on 117. We don't want them to cut through this residential neighborhood. So we'll get into some more traffic calming there as well in just a little bit. Next up is the Parker Street and Great Road intersection. And there's a few things that we're doing here. Again, just for context, north is to the right of the plan. So this is Parker Street going as a north-south roadway, and we've got Route 117 intersecting it east-west. We've got the high school tennis courts and high school track and ball fields over there and the cemetery on the northeast corner here. The Boys and Girls Club is just off the aerial photo. So what we are proposing here is to, well, a few things. One thing that was agreed to and as part of the MOA is to provide vehicle detection. And vehicle detection and also a northbound left turn arrow. Basically, the signal phasing that's out there today, people going north on Parker Street to 117 west, they have a protected phase, they have a leave phase where the southbound traffic is not going. They get the green first, but there's no arrow. You really have no idea that you can go or, you know, when your protected phase ends, you're trying to especially, you know, you see it's been going up there for a little while, you're not sure when the southbound traffic is going to start going. So that arrow and the video detection has actually been installed recently, about a month ago. That installation was money from Capital Group because the town approached Capital Group and said, you know, you've already agreed to this, it's in the MOA, it would be helpful if we could implement this stuff earlier rather than waiting another six months or however long it's going to be as we go through this planning work process. So that was something that the Capital Group folks were willing to do and happy to do, and that's recently been implemented. I think I'd like to talk to Wayne offline about either the detection or some of the timings there. He was driving through at about 9:30 on Sunday evening and just kind of sitting there waiting for the green. So we don't need to get into those details here, that there's still probably some things to work out, some tweaks to be made, which is pretty common and typical for any traffic signal changes. So in addition to that, in addition to that detection and the arrow, we are proposing to extend, basically lengthen, the left turn lanes on both the Parker Street northbound approach and the Great Road westbound approach. So that's these two approaches. There's already left turn lanes there today. These are conceptual drawings. We've actually been moving ahead over the last few months with engineering design plans. And I bring this up to provide some context, but for a couple of things here. For the northbound approach, when we got onto the engineering design, we actually found that we could get the length for the northbound left turn lane just by restriping the road and by taking out the cobblestone neighbors, which are kind of weird things in the median, which I'm sure also could be a DPW hassle for plowing and maintenance issues like that. So we will be milling and overlaying and redoing that whole surface without actually needing to touch that sidewalk on the west side to provide the left turn lane distance that we need. On the Great Road approach, we do have some very minor widening. It's in the public right way, it's only a couple of feet. We've been looking at it really closely about what we need to do. You know, we certainly want to minimize any additional impervious surfaces, things of that nature. We will be needing to file with the Conservation Commission here. There are some wetlands in the cemetery about 80 feet from the road. That said, there's a little strip of pavement just as it come around that corner in this area here, but the road is actually a foot or two wider than it needs to be. So we're going to be adjusting that curb line in and more than offsetting the additional impervious there. So we'll be extending that left turn lane on the Great Road westbound approach and offsetting that new impervious and keeping the Conservation Commission folks happy as well. Well, I'm assuming I'll be keeping them happy. We haven't gotten far enough yet. Other improvements in this area, there are crosswalks across the west leg of 117 and across Parker Street. We'll be replacing the pedestrian signal equipment there with new, the countdown pedestrian signals, which are our standard for all new traffic signaling. So the only other point that I'll make about this intersection, and I bring it up specifically because it was something in the MOA that was previously agreed to, and that is a westbound left turn arrow for Route 117 left turning traffic onto Parker Street. That's something that is in the MOA that we will be providing. Certainly, Capital Group has noticed you doing that. That said, in our analysis, I certainly understand the intent of that and basically we want to make it as easy as possible for vehicles coming westbound on 117 to turn left. If that's a hard left movement to make, people would be more encouraged to cut through that residential neighborhood. So I certainly understand the intent of it. That said, when we did our full build-out analysis, I think the intersection as a whole certainly operates more efficiently without that left turn phase. So that's something that we're going to be reviewing closely with Wayne, Town Engineer, and with Pat, the VHB peer reviewer. But that's what our analysis says, that at this point, we're moving forward without that left turn arrow. I'm sure there's going to have to be some kind of legal stuff worked out that is not my forte, not my department there, because it is in the MOA. Again, if it's something that the town feels, hey, we really want this, and it's something that the town thinks is really necessary, we will just provide our plans and we'll do it. They've already agreed to it and that's not a big deal. But from an engineering perspective, I don't think it's for the need.
Jason, can I ask you a question? How much additional pavement is required for that left turn lane?
For this year?
Yeah. If anything.
Well, on the net, we're reducing the pavement because we can narrow the roadway a little bit, but it's a couple hundred feet, square feet, it's a small, it's a small purpose. There are small areas of additional pavement. And actually, the widening on the south side of 117, again, within the public right way, the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands is about halfway across the road. So that additional work is technically outside the 100-foot buffer. Certainly, there'd be milling and overlaying and the full of that box widening for the cobblestone, removing the galls, that's kind of right at the edge of the 100-foot buffer.
Rick, could I just ask, are there other aspects of the MOA that you choose not to fulfill? I'm not, I understand the rationale, but are there other items in the MOA that...
That was news to me, just as you were.
Yeah, okay.
And if there are, I mean, then it's something that we'll deal with. I was not aware of that.
So I certainly didn't mean to surprise anyone. I had brought that issue up with Wayne and the VHB peer reviewer folks.
The jury's probably still out on that, Angelique, so it may or may not be an issue. But from a traffic analysis standpoint, it's certainly something that Jason and Pat will discuss further and then we'll review to see if that recommendation is hold water, if you will.
I mean, I think the bottom line is, is that if we agree to it, we'll do it. If it doesn't make sense from an engineering point of view, why would you want us to?
Yeah, I just need, the board's conditions for both site plan review and special permit will include compliance with the MOA. So if there are areas of the MOA that are not going to be complied with, we just need to...
As far as I know, there's no other traffic related, you know, things that differ from the MOA that, I don't want to speak to the whole MOA.
So, just in the interest of time, how much more do you have in this? I just want to make sure we have enough budgeted time for everything.
Sure, I can try to speed things up a little bit. I've got a few more things to get through, but we are doing a lot of work here, so...
Of course.
That said, why don't we move on to...
We will take a public comment on the traffic.
Jason, maybe you can go through some of the highlights of all the intersections that have been, mitigation's being provided, just so everybody can at least understand which locations are being updated.
Yeah, I'll go through the rest of the intersections pretty quickly. So the next one is Route 117, Great Road at Old Marlboro Road. This is east of Parker Street, for context. And really what we're doing here, similar to the other end of Old Marlboro Road down at Parker Street, really, let's make it more like a typical intersection, traffic calming, discouraging cut-through traffic. So this area highlighted in green is a roadway today. There's a do not enter sign kind of posted right here. I know just from talking with some folks in town, there's a do not enter with a time restriction, basically during the school bus, you know, morning peak period. So, you know, not to get into all the details, but really just making this like a regular T-intersection and getting rid of this kind of weird connection there. And it'll certainly slow any traffic down that does turn onto Old Marlboro Road from Great Road. So next, we have sort of in the middle of the residential neighborhood to the east of the project site, Old Marlboro Road at Marlboro Street and B Street. Again, similar to all the other graphics I've been presenting, the areas in green are existing roadway areas. As you can imagine, just from looking at those big green areas, it's a wide-open area of pavement, not clearly defined areas, travel lanes and things like that. So this would really, you know, have much more typical intersection layout, form of two-T intersections. Certainly, some of these folks here would get, you know, it's public right way, but it would seem like they have a much bigger front yard then. One thing that I will address here, because there was a slight difference in the traffic study and actually the peer review comments that we received from VHB just a few hours ago, the graphic that we showed in the traffic study had stop lines at the intersection of B Street here and here as well. The comment was, it doesn't really make sense to have two always stops for such minor, small intersections in that area. Generally, if you put up stop signs where they're not really needed or warranted, people are going to cruise through them and ignore them. If they do stop, they're just frustrated, they accelerate more quickly, there's more noise and stuff like that in the neighborhood. So we fully agree, you know, these boards were prepared weeks ago and we took those stop bars off. So we fully agree with VHB's peer review comment there. We still think this plan will have the desired effect of traffic calming in the neighborhood. So let's see, and then I don't have a graphic for it because there's no real physical changes, but one of the improvements that goes above and beyond what was agreed to in the MOA is at the intersection of Parker Street, Wall fam Street and Powder Mill Road. And that's that intersection right here at Duncan Donuts up there and the apartments and Excelsior Con... And so they, that signal is pre-timed today. Really, there's no vehicle detection, no loops in the road, no video or anything like that. So what we would be proposing to do there is to add video vehicle detection, and we would propose to install the same system that the town just installed at the Parker Street 117 intersection. And then for context, the same system would be at the primary driveway as well. So that video system, then there'd be three of them in the town, DPW would be familiar with them, and it would certainly improve things there with this vehicle detection. On top of that, we know that the Haynes Square intersection, Route 27 to Concord Street north of town, we know there's a lot of existing issues there. You know, we talked about the crash rate earlier today. We're not adding traffic to Concord Street, but we are adding traffic to Route 27. So what we recommended in our study was to do some traffic monitoring. We've already committed to traffic monitoring at the site drive, basically to, you know, to, we'll do counts, I think it was a six-month basis or on an annual basis for a couple of years. And then basically just, you know, let's do counts. Is the trip generation that's actually going in and out of the site, you know, does it match what we said it would? Is it more, is it less? Do we need to adjust the signal timings there? So we recommend also doing traffic monitoring up at Haynes Square. That intersection is obviously farther away than our primary site driveway. And, you know, we've got, using the best data available to us, we've made these estimates of how much traffic is going to be going along Route 27 through that intersection. But it's not an exact science, it's hard to say. So if we do traffic monitoring there, then we'll be had counts before and then after, you know, six months after it opens, a year after it opens, and, you know, we'll be able to make adjustments and look at that and do an evaluation there to see if anything is needed. That said, you know, I do want to focus, highlight that it is an existing issue, you know, certainly the crash data and I'm sure everyone who's driven through it knows, kind of got a look over your shoulder. I know vehicles do go generally slowly, it's posted 25, I'm always going through there at 25 to 30, and some people go through faster, but it is, it is a slowdown as you kind of head into town coming down from Acton. And on top of that, of course, in the MOA, Capital Group has agreed for a one million gift to the town as well as $260,000 specifically for Transportation Improvement Fund that the town can do what they would like. So that kind of covers all of the external traffic that I wanted to talk about. I don't know if, there's a few internal traffic items that I wanted to address as well, but maybe it makes sense for questions and comments or if you want me to cover just a couple of those internal traffic items.
I would prefer to stay on this topic. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if the others on the board do, but Wayne, if you think it'd be more appropriate to give your response first?
Yeah, without, thank you, Mr. Chan, without getting into too much detail.
Pat, is there anything that we should focus on? I know we kind of gave these guys our initial comment letter on the impact study just hours ago, so it's not clear that they technically respond, but is there any, based on Jason's presentation, is there any highlights you'd like to augment so at least the board and the public understand any major concerns we have?
Sure, thanks.
Sure, thanks. Pat Dunford, Traffic Engineer with VHB. We had just issued a roughly five-page letter a couple hours ago. Was thankful that Jason did not attempt to read that and address it while driving, which is great. And we'll work through these possibly in a working session or just dialogue back and forth. Again, without going through each item, the comments we did put out there were mostly requesting additional information, perhaps a different approach to analysis, or maybe additional things to be looked at. That's not to say that the study itself was deficient, it was actually very well-prepared, building upon the prior work that was done out in this area. So, there's a lot of information to draw upon. Some of the particular areas Jason actually touched upon in his presentation, we had asked for a little more of an in-depth look at the potential cut-through issues along Old Marlboro Road. So, I think we will need to have a little bit more dialogue on that. He had just talked about Haynes Square in some detail, and I think that just bears a little bit of a closer look. He is correct in that that's a longstanding, existing issue, how that intersection operates, both in terms of delays and the accident history. But the project is potentially adding traffic to there, so we just want to make sure, no opportunities are needed to address that. The estimates for the future traffic appear appropriate. We just want to make sure there may be a few different alternate ways of looking at things. I found most of the way they had estimated their traffic was actually pretty conservative. They weren't looking to cut corners or underestimate. There's just a few things I think we may want to look at a little more closely, which we can talk about. Prior meeting, we had also talked, this is kind of tying into the internal site operation, loading activity and truck deliveries. Would want to see that both quantified in just a few key spots in the site as to how the trucks would deliver. We did have a chance to meet recently and talk about some of those new learning issues, and I'm pretty confident we can work through that. Internal roundabout intersection, we had asked for some additional analysis of that. Actually, that was previously prepared last year, just wasn't included in the study. So, I think that prior analysis will still be valid, but we just want to take a close look at it to make sure the roundabout is operating effectively relative to the signal that's going to be relatively close by. And we want to make sure the queues in between the two don't cause any undue issues. Parking, the project is complying with the town zoning requirements. We also want to take kind of a functional look at that, using the same sort of ITE data Jason had talked about, just to make sure it's the right amount of parking, not too little, not too much, making sure it's positioned correctly within the site, which appears to be. But we just want to document actual demands that can be expected above and beyond zoning requirements. And again, the cut-through was something we did want to look carefully at, so that's , we had a few areas we'd want to talk about in that. But overall, I think Jason touched upon the mitigation that was proposed. It is consistent with what's in the MOA. And again, there may be some opportunities for some of those items to be adjusted. And the one he had mentioned regarding the possible elimination of a left-turn phase, that again is a possibility, it's not set in stone, but it was really just looking at the overall efficiency of the intersection. If that particular phase is eliminated, the protective phase, it makes eastbound traffic flowing a little bit easier with reduced delays. So, it's kind of a balancing act all the way around the intersection. This group's been willing to look at it either way. But again, now's the time to look at it carefully, so we just want to talk about that a little bit further. So, that's kind of an overview of the off-site traffic review that we've done. And we are going to continue to talk with the applicants just to report some of these out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board at this time on off-site traffic?
Sure. Could you just comment on, when you showed the grid laying out like a 2006, you know, it just had traffic 2013 current plan, you know, you discussed, you mentioned earlier, you know, sort of the square footage is set of the site is not significantly different from 2013, but obviously the traffic numbers are significantly different. Could you just comment on what generated that?
Yes, to, and it's, I don't have the full history of the, you know, the site layout, you know, from 2006 proposal or the 2013 proposal.
Yeah, I think we can disregard the 2006, because that was a significantly different site.
Right. The changes from 2013, maybe Bobby is better to have addressed some of those changes. I know those square footage came down, number units, that's kind of.
I think the main impact is there's approximately 100,000 feet less commercial space than there was in the 2013 plan total. And the residential apartments went from 250 to 180, so it's about 70. Even a reduction there, we did add the independent living, but that generates far less traffic than regular apartments. So, those are the two main factors. I think the main factor is the reduction in commercial space that really drives the numbers down.
And just to add to that, the, you know, I agree, the reduction in retail space, commercial space, it's an 18% to 20% reduction on a daily basis on all the peak hours. The morning peak hour, that 7.7% reduction is probably primarily related to the apartments. Retail and commercial space generates far less traffic during the morning peak hour. So, we'd expect to see less of a change there from retail alone.
Thank you.
Say.
Quick question. For the daily rates, are those trips in and out regardless of whether that person, I don't know how to phrase this, just are those, are those trips in and out regardless of what, I mean, how they're making the stop?
Yes. So, these trips, and I should say, these are two-way trips. So, if someone goes shopping, they enter and then they exit the site. Those are two trips. That's not moving.
That's what I was getting at.
And what's on this table is both the new traffic as well as the pass-by and diverted. So, these numbers on this table include the, you know, the traffic that's already on 117 or over Parker Street that would now be going to the site and then.
Do you have that broken down?
It is broken down in the traffic section.
Okay.
Let's see. So, let's see. So, I mean, looking at the PMP hour, just as an example, you know, we have 1,250 total external trips, including the pass-by and retail. There's 930 new trips. So, that's about, what's that, 320 pass-by and diverted trips on top of the new trips. And it's probably similar percentages to the other peak hours as well.
Guys, are there any questions?
Are the metrics for pass-by diverted trips just sort of standard industry assumptions? I mean?
Yes, so the ITE publishes statistics, I mean, basically based on data collected from other shopping centers and things like that. And so, it's primarily based on that data. Earlier to, in this presentation, I had alluded to sort of a change in the methodology since 2013. And really, the current guidelines from MASTOT say, use the data from ITE, but then check it and make sure that the amount of pass-by traffic that you're saying is going to go to the site doesn't exceed 15% of the traffic already on the road, right? Because it just doesn't make sense, you know, that, you know, 75% of the existing traffic is going to go into the site. I'm sure you're going to get some. So, for this site, we actually had to go below the ITE thresholds so that we wouldn't exceed that 15% of the adjacent street traffic. And that's really the change then, you know, the 2013 study didn't make that adjustment because it was before MASTOT had made, come up with that new guideline. And therefore, the number of pass-by trips back in the 2013 study were significantly higher because they didn't, they didn't limit it to 15% of the adjacent street traffic.
Thank you.
One of the improvements you mentioned was vehicle detection at the Parker Street/Waltham Street/Powder Mill intersection. Does, is that vehicle detection and left-turn lights all four ways, or what are those improvements there?
Yes, so the vehicle detection that we're proposing there, there's really a few different ways to do vehicle detection. Most common, the most common two ways are with video cameras or with inductive loops in the road, basically wire loops in the road. And when the car drives over, it changes the inductance field, for those of you who might remember electrical engineering. And that sends the signal to the controller that there's a car there. We wanted to avoid that. Certainly, video detection's become much more common in the past 10, 15 years. And this way, we can install video detection without digging up the road, without disrupting traffic for that construction. And then, on top of that, beyond just the typical video detection where you might have one camera for each approach, a more recent development is basically a big fisheye lens that's mounted very high. And that's actually what's mounted at the Parker Street 117 intersection. So, it's a single camera mounted up high, and they can see all four approaches. And we would have detection zones, and it works very similar to sort of the loop detectors in a roadway. There's actually a little monitor in the cabinet, and you just kind of draw a rectangle and say, well, that's the detection zone. And when the car comes here, that's when you tell the controller. So, that's basically how it would work.
I'm sorry, I guess my real question was, is, does that include left-turn signals at each of those?
What's the configuration of the lights there?
Sure, sure. Okay, so the, both the Parker Street northbound approach, there's a left-turn arrow. There's no left-turn lane there, nor is there really room to put it there. It's a roadway and there's buildings, there's that, what is it, Snyder's printing, just in the southwest, and the Parker building on the southeast. I hear we might get some public art though on that Snyder's printing building. But, so there's that northbound left-turn arrow. And then, on the eastbound approach, I think that's still Waltham Street, there's a through-left lane and also a left-turn arrow. And there's a right-turn lane there as well, but no right-turn arrow. So, we would not be changing that phase. We would be keeping that existing safety.
My question has to do with the one set, the area between 117 and the site?
Sure.
If you mind flipping back and primarily the, yeah, if you could use that one. I just want to, if you could point out again where the crosswalk is. I understand that there's one that exists.
Right. So, there's actually a few crosswalks. This is, so for context and reference, I'll do this here first. So, this is Field Street over here.
Right.
North Street, South Street and B Street. Again, for everyone out here, Field Street, North Street over here, South Street and B Street. So, there's existing crosswalks at B Street, South Street and at Field and North. And we're proposing to do the RRFBs that we talked about at the existing crosswalk at Field and North, and we would be maintaining the crosswalk here at South Street.
With no light?
With no.
No RFB?
No RRFB. Pretend you're going to wrap this question, if you can.
I guess the question came up in my mind about that particular one to the north when you were talking about the Old Marlboro intersection down at the south end and trying to think about pedestrians accessing the site from the south and how, if you live on Old Marlboro in that, you know, lower portion there, that to access the site on foot, just questioning how that, how that works. Whether it's, it looks to me like it's a fairly long walk to the north. Is there, is there a sidewalk on the east side of Parker Street? I don't think there is, right?
There's no sidewalk on the east side of Parker Street. There's also no sidewalks through this residential neighborhood. The traffic volumes are generally low and it's probably safe to, you know, I think most people just walk along the side of the road without too much concern in that residential neighborhood.
So, if you were living in that area and say you took, I guess it's B Street, to move in the natural direction of the project, there you would arrive at Parker Street, and then what do you do?
No sidewalk, no crossing.
This sidewalk's proposed on both sides of Parker as part of the project or just one?
Just on the west side.
Just on the west side.
Just for clarification, northern crosswalk is for the kids that are going to the school down Field Street.
Right, there's, there's also the school which draws a lot of traffic. Right, so they would want, their desire line is right down Field Street. Thank you.
They live on B Street, and that's why, that's exactly the issue actually. Because my daughter goes to school from B Street, crosses 27 to get to the sidewalk on the other side. Now, she's not going to be able to do that. She's going to actually have to walk down 27 all the way up to that new intersection to cross to get to the school side. And there's several families, like kids and families that go through there. So, I'm very concerned about the safety of that.
Yeah, we may need to discuss that as well. The DPW installed those three crosswalks about two years ago, based on concerns from the residents.
The existing ones that we identified?
The three locations that Jason identified, those were recently, one of them might have been existing, existing, but we reinstalled that and installed the other ones. So, we may have to look at this more closely. This is the first discussion, obviously, of this.
I just want to wrap up. One question, then we can go back to the public, unless, I think we're done for now with the board. If you can just clarify the extent of the sidewalk scope all the way up to, that you're proposing all the way up to 117?
Sure. Well, as Wayne mentioned, when the town redid the crosswalks and wheelchair ramps in this area here, they also reconstructed the sidewalk along the west side of Parker Street, basically from South of our site all the way up to 117. So, what we would be proposing is new sidewalks, basically from Field Street, North Street, on our, on the west side of Parker Street, to the entire front of the road, and then tying into an existing crosswalk, or existing sidewalk, rather, at the south end of our project. And what's that, 141, 141 Parker Street?
Right.
And there's actually a land swap agreement between Cap and Group and their owners to allow that work to happen. So, yeah, that's the new sidewalk.
And just to be clear, the orange that you've drawn on the north end at the crosswalk that you'll be improving connects to a new sidewalk that was recently installed?
Yes, so there's an existing sidewalk all the way through. The sidewalk that we're proposing at both the north end and the south end, it's not just going to end, it's going to meet the existing sidewalk.
Right, and you have to replace it because you're widening the road and doing all that stuff. Got it?
Exactly.
So, and then on the next sheet, I guess, there was an end to your orange-colored sidewalk. That also is linking to a, an existing sidewalk?
Right. And as I mentioned previously, you know, this concept plan was developed on the aerial photo before we had the survey and all that. As we've gone into our engineering design, we've actually been able to get the northbound left-turn lane as long as we need it without widening the road. So, this is an existing sidewalk over on that west side, and our current engineering plans don't propose to replace that, just we're not, we're not touching that. We'd be nulling and overlaying and restriping that existing roadway without touching the curb.
Got it.
Which is, which is nice. I mean, back in December, when we were first looking at these concepts, you know, it was only going to be a few feet, but then, you know, there's that fence there and kind of into the school field area. And so, I think it's great that we can avoid that and it did not impact the town property there at all or, you know, the school fields. I think there's a shop foot area right there, too. So, we're not going to be changing that existing sidewalk.
Great. So, we have a question from Megan, our alternate member.
Sure. I just have a question about the pedestrian access into the site on Parker Street. So, there's no, there'll be no crosswalk in that. The crosswalks will be where you already stated, but can you speak to the pedestrian bike access to the site at that light, at that main gateway?
Sure. Let me just put this back. So, as currently proposed, we were not proposing a crosswalk across Parker Street at that signal, primarily because there's no sidewalk over there. And we didn't want to pose just blocking to nowhere. We've certainly We've certainly heard those concerns raised, both by the board and by the public, and I'm sure that's something we'll be discussing with the town as the project moves forward, and then whether or not we do additional work there as well. I was just going to address the bike park, another question. So we do have bicycle lanes in front of the project site along Parker Street, as well as bicycle lanes along the primary site drive throughout, within the site itself. You know, we're sort of following the guidance in terms of, you know, cars yielding, you know, right turning vehicles have to yield to through bikes and that sort of thing. In addition to the bike lanes on the primary site drive, there are bike racks throughout the site, and now's probably not the best time to get into all the various locations of that, but they are developed along the primary site.
And there's sidewalks along that way?
Yes, yes, there's sidewalks along both sides of the primary site drive and sort of throughout the side as well.
Great. At this time, any comments or questions from the public for related, related to off-site traffic, please? Yes?
Trish Saunders, 11 Detting Grove. I'm curious to hear more about your reasoning for removing a left turn for westbound 117 traffic at the light, at the light of Parker Street. I travel westbound 117 every day, returning to town between 4:30 and 5:30 most days, and almost every day, the traffic is that, the three, four, five light cycles at that intersection. And it would seem that a left turn would alleviate that backup, which is only sure to get worse with this site being built up and additional traffic in the area.
Would the board like me to respond?
Yes, please, please directly respond, that's fine.
Sure.
Thank you.
So that left turn phase that was agreed upon in the MOA, that's not an existing phase, there isn't an arrow there today. So we're not taking anything away that says that.
It's a feeling intersection already.
I certainly understand that it's not operating well. I think, I've got a few thoughts about why. One in particular is that there's, there hasn't been any detection there. So basically, someone's on the side street, or even if no one's on the side street, it remains green, you know, even if no one's there. That's one of the key things, is one of the key reasons why the signal's not operating very efficiently until the protection was just installed about a month ago or so. But again, I think there's still some issues there, and some tweaks and some adjustments that need to be made. So that's, that's one big part of it. And that also sort of gets into the overall efficiency. I don't think those westbound queues, and I've been sitting in that queue as well, for years I commuted into Summer Bowl and was on that 117 westbound in the evening as well. I don't think it backs up because people are waiting to turn left and blocking through lanes. I think it's backing up because the intersection that's pulled isn't operating very efficiently, and stays green on approaches when there's cars there, just not a very efficient use of the signal signal.
So with all due respect, if I could just respond, I think that left turning traffic will create greater backup once the site is built up, because what you want is people going left and getting down there. And so I hope the board will continue to explore this issue repeatedly.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment?
Please.
So we haven't really reviewed these offsite plans, and this is the first that's been presented to the public. DPW is concerned and is quite aware of the cut through traffic issue, and we're not looking to exacerbate that. So this will be, this will be scrutinized and discussed quite, quite a bit. We understand that from an operational perspective, the numbers may make it look better without it, but it may be that it ends up staying in the plan just to keep people out of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm Bernie Dunson, 118 Parker. I'm definitely going to follow up on this one. I typically go through the intersection every day, I'm dragging off the train, it's about six o'clock, and there's several things. One, the striding that's there now has narrowed that left turn, so when cars pull up close, it becomes very hard to make that turn. But because the light maybe exacerbated, is so long, traffic backs up coming eastbound, so you can't make that turn if you're not there. And as a result, what you see is people cutting in front of those other cars. So, you know, I'm, I'm saying that, I don't know what changes you take every day, but that turn, that left turn is something that, for me, is difficult every single day. And sometimes, and the other thing about that, with that tied to the left turn lane direction, taking the cobbles out, something I, the other day, I, I almost got clobbered because of people cutting that intersection. I don't know if there's a term, or if the police have a term for it, but it's when you don't want to wait in the light, and you slide, you're coming eastbound on 117, and you start to make the turn onto 27, and then cut over in that little ramp. And, you know, the other day I was coming, making that turn left, and someone, it's a Subaru that does it every day. And...
I totally agree.
But, but still, all the evidence is...
Maybe she's thinking.
So I, but taking the cobbles out, I think, you know, and making the stripe is going to help the left lane, but I think it's going to influence people's perception.
Ken asked for a point in McKenna Street. I have several, several points. So I believe that one of the mitigations that was on the list was at the intersection of Main Street and Great Road. I know you aren't, but one of the improvements on the list that was agreed to under the old plan was at Main Street and, and Great Road. So that's something that the board needs to take a look at. Historically, when we looked at this project, one of the, one of the toughest parts was the north, going on to the second point, was the northbound left turn lane into the project, that the, the configuration there, there was no way of making that lane very long. And that during high traffic areas, you end up with a lot, with that left turn lane backing up quite a bit. So I would recommend that, take a very close look at that left turn lane, at ways that you can keep that clear. That was one of the things that we spent a lot of time over when we did this previously. Truck free traffic is an enormous part of the success of this thing, getting trucks off of Parker Street and into the, the site quickly, let them do their deliveries and then get them out. The roundabout both enhances the traffic, but also potentially creates a jam point there. And so we're thinking mostly, I think, about cars, but I really suggest that you take a look at delivery truck traffic and ways that you would be able to do that. Now, in the previous project, we had our delivery hour restrictions, and I'm not suggesting that or advocating for that. What I'm saying is, is in fact, that was what we had to come to in order to make the delivery, the ingress and egress of the, of delivery truck traffic work. The next point is on Marlboro Road, the cut through on Marlboro Road is not about getting people from 117 down to the project, or, or having people leave the project and, and get back out into 117. The whole idea of Marlboro Road was that people over time would learn, if you wanted to avoid the traffic at 117 and Parker, that a good way of doing that was cutting over on Marlboro Road and avoid it. It's not, it has nothing to do with trying to get to 120 on Parker, it is about, how do I make that left turn and not wait for the three or four cycles that I'm required to? Oh, you know, Old Marlboro Road is a good way for me just to avoid the whole thing. That was one of the reasons for the traffic mitigation, that was one of the reasons for the stop sign on Old Marlboro Road, was to increase the amount of time that traffic, retake traffic getting through that. And so again, I'm not advocating for a traffic sign on Old Marlboro Road, I'm just saying that that's the reason why we look so closely at that. Another issue is the timing of these mitigations. So at some point, you're going to have to address when these mitigations get done, whether they're done right away or whether they're spread out, and maybe that's part of what has been proposed, but at some point, that's going to have to be detailed. And then finally, the left turn arrow, I believe that the reason why you're suggesting the left turn arrow is not required, is because that left turn arrow adds to the time where straight through traffic is not able to go. That's the idea there. That all said, the signaling there of including that left turn arrow would be important. Whether it's used or not used, at some point in the future, I think we're going to find, even if in the beginning it is not, that there are going to be times when that left turn arrow has to be, has to be used. I think we're all familiar with that, that, that intersection. But that left turn arrow was a critical part, and was part of the MOA on purpose, and so I would agree that those be kept on. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there one more?
I think also, 15 Detting Grove, you mentioned that you, after the study, you do periodic studies for traffic and everything, monitoring?
Yes.
Is Detting also on that list? Because right now, we have to take two or three minutes to get out of the OZL, so there's not, but that one's only seven, we've got it, sadly.
The only intersections currently in the MOA for intersection monitoring is the primary site drive, and we've recommended the Haynes Square intersection as well.
Was OZL in the original traffic study?
It wasn't the original.
I mean, when you did your traffic study?
Yes, yes.
Detting Grove, my dear, when you did your study, based on all the traffic coming through the lights, did you figure out, like, the amount of cars that are going to be parked waiting, will it block OZL or Field Street? Are there people getting out?
We did do that analysis, and as with every traffic signal, it's a balancing act. We certainly, you know, we understand this is a new signal on Parker Street. It's a place, you know, people hit a red light, they're going to have to stop, where they don't stop today. That said, we're generally running a much shorter cycle length compared to the 117 intersection. Basically, the whole intersection will cycle through more quickly, and we're not expecting any backups, certainly not, not down to the OZL, not at the Field Street. While I'm talking about queues, I believe it was Ken who brought up the northbound left queues. We've actually, you know, the agreement with 141 Parker Street for that land swap would actually allow us to do a longer left turn lane if needed. We would have that right away. The queues that we've, that we've analyzed during all peak periods can be accommodated by the current design. So we would not expect that left turn, that northbound left, to spill back and block through traffic on Parker Street. Certainly, that was a big consideration in this design, we want the signal to operate efficiently, because we don't want to, you know, we want to minimize any additional stops and delays for people just traveling past the site on Parker Street.
Jason, what's the approximate length of that left turn lane going into the site, just roughly?
150 or 200 feet. And while we're talking about that, because we all love to talk about traffic engineering, we are going to propose a left arrow for the northbound left entering the site. During the morning peak period, we don't think it's needed, you know, not a lot of people are going shopping there in the morning. So, you know, it's sort of a new thing. Instead of the green arrow, yellow arrow, and then the green ball when you have to yield, make a left yield movement, there's now the green arrow, and then it goes to a flashing yellow arrow when you have to yield. So during the morning peak hour, when, when we don't really have a lot of traffic going into the site, it would kind of, the whole signal would skip that green arrow and just go straight to a flashing yellow arrow, so people would have to yield in the morning to enter the site. It's entirely allowed, again, that's something that we're going to discuss in detail with the town engineer and the HEB peer reviewer, but something that we thought was appropriate, in particular to make that signal operate as efficiently as possible and to minimize delays on Parker Street.
Really quickly, please.
Well, that was a long presentation, and there were a number of comments.
Please go ahead.
So, one thing was, my question, one question was, when would these traffic counts take in, and how? I'm right there on the corner, I wonder if it's a lot, and I'm not sure.
The traffic counts were collected in November 2016, and typically, how the data were collected, there were an automatic traffic reporter across 117, it's basically two pneumatic tubes across the roadway, and, and then the intersection counts themselves were all done with video reporters. So basically, one camera on a pole, maybe 15, 20 feet up, probably tied to a utility pole or something of that nature, looking down, and...
I don't remember anything about that, you know, Field Street. You mentioned traffic.
It was out there for a few days, I mean, I certainly remember seeing them out there, you know, certainly along 117 near the schools and Converse Street, Center Road.
You mentioned traffic, you mentioned counting traffic that went, that was already on the road, at Michael Bischoff Center, and then come out again, and that really wasn't a new vehicle. But then you mentioned cars coming along 117, going down to the shopping plaza, coming back out, you said that was diverting, and it didn't really, it wasn't, it wasn't an additional car in the network, but it certainly is an additional car in the network between 117 and...
Absolutely.
Where originally, where a number of us live and have streets, you know, on that point. And that table you showed, that shows reduction in previous studies, what seems to be missing in, in understanding of what the volume of traffic would be, is what's the baseline? What's the current? I mean, it's interesting to see the change from our business opinion, but I'm not sure what the increase will be for those of us who live.
And again, the focus of the comparison of the previous proposals was really to highlight that even though the current proposal is generating, would generate less traffic than the previous proposals, all of the mitigation that was previously agreed to when a much larger project was proposed is still, is still going through the process. For context, on Parker Street itself, there was about 11,300 vehicles per day on weekday, with about 1,000 vehicles during the PMP gallop.
Well, it's my understanding, I think, that we, you know, we're going to be revisiting this issue, it sounds like, you know, we need time for the applicant to review the HB's response, and there were a couple of things that came up tonight that clearly need to be chewed on a little bit longer, so I fully expect that we will return to this issue. And I recognize it's a very important issue, but we need to get on to the rest of the agenda for tonight, unless there are any other absolutely critical things to summarize, I would like to close this portion and move on to the Hawthorne presentation, if we can.
That's what we would prefer also, since, Representative Mark Law...
That's what we would prefer also since the representative, Mark Law, has been here on the.
Thanks, Jason.
Chairman, what time are you trying to?
Well, let's talk about it while we're shifting gears. Clearly, we'll talk Hawthorne. The topic of landscape, I understand, is your consultant is here. I'm afraid that it's a topic that deserves a little more time perhaps than we have.
And that's what I thought also that we think that with Hawthorne, I mean, it's now time you can start, but there's no way we're going to get fully presumed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment. If you do have time for the landscaping, I think it may be good to talk about some of the buffers and focus on the buffers tonight because we generated a landscape comment letter that I, obviously, they haven't had time to digest, and I wouldn't want to get into the details. But for my overall review, the landscape buffers may be something that the board may want to focus on a little bit.
That's your.
Any input, any input can be heard.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
We will do what we can.
I'm here with many architecture on behalf of Hawthorne Development. We are the continuing care retirement facility part of this. Let me go ahead and, oops, there is a noise there. Anyone else? This is a quick packet here to discuss the design and appearance of our building. Right of the hour, I won't belabor this too much.
You have a night. That'd be great.
I have to give one for myself.
Sure. You need another, John, I can share.
You got a card? I think you're familiar with where we're located on the, on the bigger side. We are a four-story building. I'm going to make sure pushing the right tuckings here, maybe go forward. I am not advancing. All right. This is just basic goals, site wise, so far as being a transition site. This is one of the other ten goals. Actually, I'm going to push forward. Let's go to the next line. Jump into just a quick review so far as what the, what the building has, so far as its residential style, our suites and patios without the needs. We have thirty percent open space. We provide one, two, and studio sized suites. Our B S suites because they are. Let's move on. Exterior, what we try to do is blend in the natural landscape around. We try to create a very lax, lax and formal style. We try to do a rambling asymmetrical floor plan. Irregular roof lines, we try to break things up, push things out, so it's not a big flat surface. And I'm just going to state for the record, I hate giving you elevations because they're flat and they don't look like they have any dimension to them. So that's why you have some renderings in there as well. We provide shaded porches, deed lines, we do brick, in this case, brick, I don't think there will be stone on this site. And we try to keep breaking up our wall surfaces. Let's go to the next. These pictures, this gives you a front and back bird's eye view of our building on the site. I believe we have that one in the packet. Let's go ahead to the next one. This gives you the view from the entry area of what our building is going to look like. Let's just keep moving on so that unless someone's, you know, stopped. This also gives you, that would be the north west perspective, looking towards the entrance or looking at the entry from both ends of the building. Now I'm going to go around to the backside, take a look at the courtyard area. There's our access drive, a little closer up, showing our portico, and again, how the building is broken up, those are how the patios and decks are and the look line. Next, please. This takes us from our back courtyard, showing some of the courtyard space for our residents, as well as again, how we break these up, step down from the fourth, third, down to the first floor. And then the open courtyard area that lies behind our building. Next, please. And this is from the other side. We look to the, to the west, looking at the back of our building. Here's one of our carports that runs along our back property line. So our site. And the next, please. There's another third side view, giving you a better idea, a little more close up of what we're looking at in regards to the back of our building, where our garage and carports are located. And courtyard area. There's the elevation to the page I don't like because it doesn't give you any depth. But again, it shows you, we have a combination of brick, horizontal party flag siding. We also use the shingle flag siding into the gable ends. We've landed together what we've developed over the last about six, eight years, we call it Easter style. It's been very popular, very successful. Good examples of that would be the one that we have in Westboro, Massachusetts, and the one that we have in Franklin, Massachusetts as well, would be good examples of it. I believe the next page is specific details so far as various aspects of the building, posts, windows, patios, railings. We've got two pages of that. Move on. That also gives the details of our garage, garage buildings, or six story garages that are on site. And I think the last slide I have is actually a color palette and materials palette, showing what we're proposing so far, various materials, colors, type of bridge. What can I tell you?
Well, I guess I would like to just clarify or restate for everyone that it's, it's my understanding that our peer review architect will be providing input onto these designs as well. Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the plans are, I think he's expecting next session, next planning board meeting.
So while we're obviously can comment on any of this, as can anyone else, we will have a professional opinion. My concern about the building has to do with servicing. I'm looking and I'm wondering, is there a loading dock or, I think I see a dumpster facility across the parking lot, but I am curious as to how the nitty gritties of this building.
So far as servicing it, we do not have a loading dock per se where our front backs up. It is a drop down area. All of our deliveries are set up where we have a, we have a drop off loading area that has near the back kitchen access, because that's where the majority of our suppliers provided to. And just a step around this, I can see where that will be located in this case. So that is going to, I believe that our drop off area is back in this area here. So they're going to come around, drop off here in the kitchen area. So far as the rest of our drop offs, we have our covered court, court area where our residents come in, so far servicing it. And then I believe our dumpster facility is right back there as well. So it's all behind the building.
So mail, FedEx, and so forth comes to the front door.
That's right.
And then not using a full loading dock, are you, I mean, are you anticipating receiving deliveries from, you know, a tractor trailer type truck?
We typically have a short, excuse me, short truck box tractor trailer that delivers. I think it's a twenty-four foot box, so it's not as big as a full tractor trailer makes it to be. Again, our suppliers, they'll want a more short box or, like, deliveries. We usually receive two to three major deliveries a week.
One of the things that I'd like to touch on at the end is, is talking about, you know, a comprehensive understanding site wide, but just understanding specifically how this particular building works, I think, is, is useful. And you, all the laundry facilities.
On site.
On site, so you're not loading, unloading laundry or linens or anything like that? It's really primarily food in, waste out.
That's, that's the end of the point.
All right.
I have one quick question.
Please.
You mentioned the kitchen back entrance on the back of the building, but the kitchen on the plan that's here is on the front. So is that?
Let me, let me double check. I don't, I don't, you're wrong here.
You're on the first floor plan?
Yep.
Okay.
For your lounge.
I stand corrected. We do have a delivery spot back here, but as well, we also have a long, long walkway into the rear, there's actually a delivery parking space here. And then there's also deliberate access in the back that we have additional, but primarily it's going to be coming from right here. As far as.
Got it.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing.
So they park in a twenty-four feet, they're pushing the limits of a single parking space, but that's the intent. It's a special, a special parking space. Okay. And then they need a ramp, right?
We, they actually, as you ramp, we actually, we're going to do a drop in.
Do you, do you have your own, in terms of site landscape design, that's your own? I understand there's a.
It's part of our.
It's part of your package. Okay. So that'll be, thank you.
We have specific objectives that are.
Got it. It's, it'll be covered later. Any other questions from the board at this time? Any questions from the public related to the Hawthorne Retirement Building? Yes, please.
Maybe, can you remind me of the, I think there was a discussion only the type of person, how ambulatory.
Where we fit in the whole spectrum senior housing units, we're just above the, the whole, whole course community, and, and that's below us, assisted living is above us. So we provide non-medical facility, providing daily services. So they get all meals, transportation, housekeeping, laundry services, and activities.
My question is a four-story building was for, and I assume a wood building, so the question is regarding safety and the safety of the building, but people who live in that inventory, and we can't do the laundry with their furniture. So I think that was why I asked the second person. And thinking of four-story building, older people getting out in an emergency situation.
I can go into great detail, but actually, the way the building is built, it's built as three separate buildings, the central floor and two wings with firewalls in between. So in the event there is a fire situation, you might, the entire building is fully sprinkled. So the idea of the, of the building needing to be evacuated for fire is not realistic. Part of the process is we have points of refuge, and we have systems and setup to evacuate our residents under any circumstances. And we need all the, the required fire and safety regulations.
I think so. Always go according to plan and depending on recently, was affected by something like that. So.
I guess a question to Wayne. I understand at a certain point, probably not tonight, we'll be talking about water consumption on the project overall.
Correct.
And I guess I have concern about that on all, in all uses on the property and, and this one in particular. And I, and we can talk about it at that time, but I guess I'd like to make sure that you feel that you have what, I guess, the adequate information so that we can estimate consumption appropriately and have that broader discussion at the time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so thank you. So we talked quite a bit with the applicant about the town's, the town's water usage, the town's permitted withdrawal limits and discharge limits, et cetera. They provided a memo a couple of weeks ago. We've asked our water consultant, Stantec, to look at that. And just hours ago, we provided some follow-up comments that, again, I don't anticipate talking about tonight, but kind of a general statement, it appears that based on their analysis, there is adequate water and sewer capacity for this project. I think that as they've noted in their report, you know, this project as a whole would be looking for water conservation measures, low flow this and low flow that, which we can talk about. But as a, as a general statement, it seems that the, the water and sewer capacity is there to support that. The details of which we can talk about more. And we can certainly have Stantec at a future discussion to give you the feedback as well.
Thank you. Any further questions from the public? Thank you very much for coming in.
For receiving the peer review comments.
All right. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
I guess we'll quickly move to landscape. We can kind of get it started at least. Well, I mean, we've, we've been trying to wrap up at nine thirty. And I won't stop anyone from finishing a sentence, but I think that would be best for us all if we're going to stay on this two-week schedule.
And then we'll be able to discuss basically when the next meeting is and what the objective is.
I will reserve time at the end to plan accordingly for next time.
So my name is General Hornet, and I'm a registered landscape architect with Water and Design Associates, an associate firm. Our role in this project is to provide the planting design for the site that was, has been currently laid out and has been approved at the meeting, the overall concept plan. Just as a little bit of background, we worked with the town and the butters back in the fall when it was going through the timing process, street before the buffer plantings on the north and south buffers. And I've been with them on the field and discussed with them, you know, what their goals were for buffering. And that's what's currently shown, what was shown on the plan back in the fall and what was approved at town meeting and what is still currently being shown on the town, on the, on the plan. And that essentially entails planting scare, evergreen planting scare, and a, a foot high stock defense along the entire southern property. Property line just inside the property, locus property. It consists of basically plantings of giant everybody, white fir, and norway spruce, eight ten feet, all of the kind of plantings spaced about ten feet apart. And numerous rows, maybe about four rows of staggered plantings of that on the, on the north property, where there will be, bearing the rest of it is to remain undisturbed. And then on the south property line, again, we got a few butters out there in the field in the fall, and propose a similar planting scheme with norway spruce, the giant everybody, and white fir, again, eight to ten feet tall of plantings spaced about ten feet apart, again, with a, with a fence just inside the locus property line. All of those will be planted on a berm, so to maximize the height in those locations to maximize the buffer screening. So that's all that was presented back in the fall. And again, that's, that continues to remain the same. That hasn't changed on the plans at all. We didn't do any plantings back in the fall, so obviously, as the site plan developed, we developed planting plan for the interior portion of the site. And that is what we see here, and that was what was submitted as part of the plan set. So just to quickly walk you through that, generally, our, our process with that is we try to implement the low impact development philosophy for planting material with the use of drought tolerant native plant material. For the retail component, there won't be any irrigation at all. So really, throughout the entire interior of the site, there's really no turf grass areas to minimize the need for, for water. So all the plant material that we spec in that area, in those areas was, you know, things like ornamental brasses, perennials, drought tolerant, salt tolerant plant material, especially where along Parker Street, where we dissipate the salt spray from, from snow piles. And in addition to salt tolerant, we also spec along the perimeters where there, you know, budding parking lots, again, like ornamental brasses, perennials, low growing plant material that can handle a little bit of snow stare or storage in the winter and still bounce rounds back in the spring. rounds back in the spring. So just to get into a little bit of the, of the tree infrastructure, I don't have one copy of this plan, so. Push this back a little bit. I'm sure everybody can see, but I'll try to do the best I can there. So for, for, for the tree infrastructure, basically, what we're proposing, and this is just a color-coded plan, it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, leaf color or flowering color or anything like that, it's just to distinguish with different varieties of trees that we spec throughout the site. So along Parker Street, we have white oak on, along the street, and on either side of the sidewalk. Try to provide a little bit of fall color interest through what we were able to provide. We weren't able to spec any ALB, Asian longhorn beetle post trees, so that eliminated things like maples, elms, birches, and the London plane trees, things like that. So it kind of minimizes the, the plant list for, for the tree infrastructure, so. But again, just along Parker Street, we have white oak proposed there, on average, roughly about 60 feet on center. And again, it's kind of staggered on either side of the sidewalk that runs along Parker Street. Along the main access drive, on the outside, we have azaleas, spaced about 25 feet from the center. And then along the median, on the main access drive, we have an upright, you know, just to kind of minimize any potential damage with vehicles going in and out there, more of an upright branching at tree in that location. Within the northern retail parking areas on the north-south access, we're specing sweet bun trees, in those locations, and that's shown in purple here, and that's on the north-south access. And then in the front portion of the site, we have, it's shown in yellow here, are honey locusts, more on the east-west access, and that's shown here, in these areas, and it carries through across there. On the south portion of the retail side of the site, we are specing pine briers in that location, and that has a nice golden fall color. And then, we also carry the honey locusts in the back there as well. So that's pretty much the tree infrastructure within the retail development. And then as you work your way through to the residential component, along the access drive, we're specifying a linden tree on either side of the driveway. Again, that, that spacing is probably around 30 or 40 feet on center. On the outside of the driveway, and then along the median entering into the retail component, we're specifying an upright care tree in that location. And that's the same, same care tree that we have located in the, around the lot as well. And then within the, within the rest of the residential development, it's kind of a mix of what we spec throughout the rest of the site, carry the white oak through there, the sweet bun, and the honey locust as well. And then within the continuing care community, we also have the, the linden trees and, and dingo carried through that location as well. So that's essentially the tree infrastructure portion of the site. If you work your way back through to the, to the retail component, along Parker Street, so wherever we have landscape areas, we packed in with, you know, again, ornamental brasses, low-growing shrubs. The entire interior portion of the retail development is, all the landscape areas are all landscaped with plant material, there is no, no turf grass anywhere within those areas. So along Parker Street, we kind of have a, a band, alternating banding effect of plant material as you, as you travel along Parker Street. On the east side of the sidewalk, again, we anticipate, you know, salt spray, so we have alternating low-growing juniper and fountain grass along Parker Street, and that continues all the way down on the east side of the sidewalk. And on the west side of the sidewalk, we have, again, ornamental brasses, perennials, I think we're carrying through there, feathered grass, some red twig dogwood, rebecca, black-eyed susans, little blue stem brass. So a variety of different types of plant material, different textures, different interests throughout the year. And that alternating band effect, we tried to carry through the entire site, and there's a lot of irregular landscape beds here, so instead of, in order to try to simplify that, we carry these bands of massive plant materials throughout there to kind of simplify and unify those plant beds. So as you travel into the site along the, along the main access drive, on either side of the driveway, we have, again, fountain grass and, and juniper. And then in the median, we have little blue stem, we have some, a mix-in of some roses as well as, as daylilies. And the daylilies are repeated throughout wherever we have a crosswalk, so the plant material changes at all the crosswalks and all, all the intersections, so you know that you're approaching those areas. So again, within the entire retail portion of the site, there is no irrigation. As you work your way back in through the, the residential and the continuing care, we do anticipate having some irrigation in those locations, mainly within the residential area around the clubhouse. Again, there'll, there'll be a little bit more lawn area in front of the clubhouse with the mix of plantings and flowering trees in front of the buildings, not just the clubhouse building, but also all of the, the other residential buildings. And then that, similar concept with the continuing care component of the project as well. In those areas, we have a little bit more opportunity for more flowering shrubs and things like that. They're more protected from the parking lots, and again, we anticipate irrigation for, for both those components. So, just to quickly wrap things up, we, we did get a peer review letter, we got that last night, so we did go through it briefly. We haven't had time to, obviously, respond to all of those comments, so, you know, obviously we'll work towards addressing those, those issues that were brought up.
Thank you. Wayne, maybe if you want to elaborate a little bit on the concern on the buffers, perhaps?
Yeah, so I actually spoke out of turn, I was more concerned with some of the, discussing the side, the side buffers, which I think the, the landscape architect talked a little bit about, so I'm satisfied.
North and south side?
Yeah. I'm satisfied with that at this point, and anything else we can, we can talk on for the time.
What we would propose also is that, as Jim has pointed out, we've just got the peer review, we would like to schedule some sort of a, a working meeting again, because that seems to be very productive, so that when we come back here, we can have worked out most of the issues or most of the concerns.
Right. And I guess there's also, in this case too, there's a component of the landscape plan that was captured in the concept plan, so we need to clarify that that's been adhered to. It appears, you know...
Jim, one thing I'd like to see, if possible, I think it'd be important to add a typical cross-section of the buffer, the incompatibility buffer between the commercial and the residential, so that, you know, people can look at it and have an idea of what's going to be the typical section of that 45-foot buffer.
The existing residential, is that what you're talking about?
Well, no, the, the, the incompatibility buffers are going to be proposed, the 45-foot buffer, I think.
Yeah, you guys have, I think, yeah.
I've seen them before, I thought. Let's incorporate that, can we, work that into the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that should be in there for the, so, yeah. And the other question I had, on the, is there a, or did I miss, is there a tree maintenance plan for what trees are going to be kept in there, and what are going to be removed?
As far as existing plant...
Yeah, in other words, so we know, we know what's going to stay, what's going to go, and why.
Within the entire perimeter or interior portion of the site, really, nothing is going to be maintained by time with, with reconstruction and the utility installation or anything like that, there's, there's really no opportunity to save anything in there, and a lot of the plant material that, that is in there, you know, I wouldn't recommend saving anyway. The perimeter is certainly worth saving, especially on the north side. On the south side, you know, again, we did meet with the butters, and we had lengthy discussions about what to do out there, and it's pretty sparse what's there now. So our recommendation along with their, you know, approval was to eliminate the plant material along, along that area, and replace it with more evergreen plants.
And, and one other thing I'd like to see in the landscape plans coming along is the buffer widths called out for particularly along the residential on these, if it'd be accurate.
Comments from the board?
None at this time.
I think we're going to loop back on this, any comments from the public on landscape, please?
One quick question, because I, from this distance, I can't see. So the northern border from Parker Street Inn, my property line, is that, plantings been eliminated, is that grass, or is there still buffer there, right there?
This, this is...
All I see is green, it looks like grass.
It's proposed, it's proposed new plant material.
Because even the cross-section, it's hard to see.
Yeah.
Because I see trees elsewhere, you know, I always see a green.
Yeah. That's, that's it, and then we have the cross-sections too. And again, it's, it's, it's the same concept that was presented in the fall, so that really hasn't changed at all.
Right, so I guess, maybe the same as with the tra, the traffic, it sounds like you're stating that there's no, to your knowledge, no deviation from the...
That's correct.
Right, okay, thank you. Yes, please.
I could also, Team Delling Road, on the south side, one of the plans on the site shows snow being put where the buffer is. I thought the buffer was supposed to be a buffer where nothing goes there. And one of the plans shows snow being put there. And I live below, this thing's a common development, I might not get flooded if they go to snow there.
Thank you. I think that, you know, in the discussion of operations and landscape, we're going to talk about snow removal, and that, you know, certainly look at any conflicts between the indicated snow storage and other aspects of the project that need to continue to function.
Here's Sandra's Delling Road, just to clarify, the original concept, someone had a retaining wall at the 45-foot line, and some of the newer images show that retaining wall a little bit closer to the property line. And I'd like to get clarity that the retaining wall would go over the 45-foot line.
That's my understanding, yeah.
There are a number of images that show it in closer property line.
I prefer to hold on that, I don't, we didn't move it, so I don't know. Which, it's the street wall right there.
So, here, and we need that intercooler front. That retaining wall, the 45-foot, 45-foot.
So...
And the retaining wall is...
It sounds like it's the intent, that the retaining wall doesn't move.
The 35-foot, not that, the 45-foot line.
It was shown, it was shown right at the 45-foot line.
But on a number of the more recent renderings, it's not at the 45-foot line, so...
Okay, we'll have to look at that.
Yes, please.
Is there any street standard as to when you switch out a tree, someone decides, say, yeah, that's not going to do it, because I'm going to butter it, my, my choice might be sooner than whoever asks to pay for it. You know what I mean? Is there any street standard, or?
As, as far as, I mean, the, the quality of the tree, and, you know...
Yeah, you know, someone might say, oh, we got a couple green leaves, it might come back.
Yeah, we, we have a drop.
I mean, you know, a third of it is, is dead, and I'd say that, you know, it's probably time to go.
Who's responsible for that?
Where's the tree?
I'm the buffer.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's in this area, then, you know, we were removing everything in that area anyway, so...
Right. No, no, I mean, after, you know, eight years from now, we...
It's part of the making, it's part of the planning.
One thing, on the, you were here in the fall?
Yes.
My neighbor wanted this eight-foot fence as far away as possible, and the other neighbor wanted it right along the wall.
Right, right.
And you said I could have it either way, I think I'd like my 45-foot as well.
Which, um...
13, no, your house.
Third one, is that it?
Next one.
Oh, that one?
No.
All right, well, yeah, I think what we, what we proposed back then was to put the, basically follow the berm, the top of the berm is where the, the fence was going to go.
Yeah.
And it was based on the existing topography, and what we were proposing for the topography in, in here. So, you know, you, you know, biggest bank for the block, when you have the wall on top of the highest point of the berm, so. But we can, we can, I think that's where it was, but it, it did angle back as you get close to the property line, so.
Thank you for the presentation. I think, similar to other issues, we've got, we have some homework to do, it seems like there's a discussion still happening, and a potential workshop of some kind, or collaborative meeting. So I think, I think that concludes the discussion of landscape for now, and I guess I'll just make a very quick statement about a discussion that we had about operations, I kind of alluded to it before, and then we can talk about moving forward. Just was discussing with council and town planner and Wayne about the issue of understanding the project's operations, and, you know, we heard a little bit from Hawthorne, but I think it would be very helpful for the board to get some input from you guys about, you know, hours of operation, hours of delivery, the snow issue, and kind of capture all those thoughts into some kind of an operational presentation or package that describes that, you know, where are trucks entering, where are they turning, all that type of thing, it's, I'm sure, fairly standard for any development, I would imagine, and you're, I don't know if we have any specific criteria to add, but please, John.
Right, okay, just, just add, I think the other question is, at some point, the plan board's going to condition, if it reaches an approval, condition hours of operation, you know, like, condition hours of operation for several of the retail stores, and perhaps all of the retail stores. So if there are proposed hours of operation, if you know, if there's a range, some, some sort of proposal, per store or, or category, would be the recommendation?
So with that said, I guess that would be one item that, you know, I think would help us start to more fully understand the project and its impacts. So I would like to, you know, I would encourage you, I guess, to try to provide that sooner rather than later, and...
We can do that at the, I mean, when we're on the agenda, I gather that next time we're going to return to landscaping, but we would like to do the operation presentation at the next meeting as well.
So we're talking about April 25th?
So...
Which I'm...
That's if they can get together and, and meet on the, the landscaping... Well, is that enough?
I can't, I'm not going to be here.
Yeah, okay, 25th is good, and what about completion?
Okay. Well, so, sorry. Sorry, everyone. I did discuss this with Bill a couple of weeks ago, and forgot to mention this. So I'm out of town on the 25th.
On next week, okay? Next week, Carl?
25th. I'm out of town, next meeting.
Yeah, two of us are gone then.
On 25th?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're out on 25th, Charlie?
Yeah, I told you a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
So I'm writing this down, we're going to...
Are you allowed to miss one?
I'm in India the following, if we try to move that...
The second is no good for Andrew.
On the contrary.
Speak up, guys.
Are there options now? What are we talking about?
Just anything, any conflicts going into, through May, I might as well just... Just anything, any conflicts going into, through May, I might as well just put it all out on the table.
So that would leave us with four, and that would be...
Next week.
I'm good all Tuesdays in May.
Oh, he's good all Tuesdays in May, all right, thank you.
I don't have anything else planned, I just have, I'm just out of town. I mean, I can appear telephonically if that's allowed.
You're just the 25th is your conflict.
Just the 25th.
And you're just the second.
Yes.
Okay. So normally scheduled meetings coming up would be the 25th, the 9th, and the 23rd.
Second, I believe.
9th and 23rd of May. When is...
Oh, yeah, May 25th.
I'm sorry, what's the matter with...
23 is not good for us right now.
So we really need to target May 9th.
I don't see any issues with May 9th right now, so that's good.
And there will be...
Well, I mean, we would have, we would have four board members who need to mull in, I mean, if it's...
We'd have three and an alternate, I think, right?
Right, we have three and an alternate.
Fifty, oh, like, if I ended up in the state then.
I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have a meeting anyway on, we have advertised item on the 25th, other than...
Other than...
Other than Park, right, I do...
Town meeting, is that planned to this? That's Monday, the 15th, so no, so no. But we couldn't meet any, probably that week, probably wouldn't work.
I mean, do you recommend against...
You know, it's the choice of the applicant. I would not recommend...
Meeting with four?
Meeting with four, just given the gravity of this project, but it's up to the board and it's up to Angelo.
We would prefer not skipping because we have some serious time constraints, and we don't mind you cherry picking the topics on that meeting, but as long as we can keep moving forward, okay, it would be helpful.
Maybe if you went through some of the public comment, we could do another recap presentation when, correct, was that the next meeting?
You could, it won't help in terms of...
No.
Board members missing the meeting.
Right, yeah.
So in other words, you run the risk of losing voting members.
Aren't they, can't they miss one?
Right.
I mean, that's a list that we have to take, and we can't, we put this over until the 9th of May, and then we have one night that we can't be here on 23rd, and they were already in June.
That's 27th.
With one meeting, and the next is...
Is there any specific rule against not meeting a week of town meeting?
No, 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 that one we haven't got.
I'm saying it's an option.
I'm generally good.
You mean if we had it the same night?
No.
No, no, we've done that before, we did that last time.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We could easily, we could do it the week of town meeting as well.
Right.
Can I ask a question to the applicant? So what topics would be, let's say, I don't want to say non-controversial, but what would make sense? I mean, would it make sense to, internal and off-site traffic? I mean, that's something that doesn't really revolve around the site plan components, obviously commitments from the site by far. Just throwing it out there.
Sure, please.
That may be something that...
Do you, what about next week?
Okay, we could definitely get the internal stuff done, operations.
Cather is on my first...
It's not anybody's, well, I think it is somebody else's.
What, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday?
18th.
When's that, the 18th?
18th, yeah.
We can't do that.
18th is...
No, I'd be in, I got a meeting in brain training.
Well, we can't, the only thing is we couldn't do it here. Oh, that's right, yeah, we'd have to go down and, in my dungeon.
It sounds like Tuesday is not going to work next week for all of us.
Oh, all right, well...
Wednesday or Thursday? No, Thursday's not good for me, Wednesday would be bad.
Not good for me.
I think it's like Sunday morning.
Donuts!
Look, the 25th, we have, we have two, we have two advertised items, and I don't anticipate they're going to take long.
Well, then why don't we, why don't we limit, cherry pick, like you said, the issues that we're going to talk about on the 25th?
Mm-hmm.
We can talk about water and sewer consumption because, I mean, that is, we're relying on your input as far as what the town is permitted for.
Mostly, yeah.
And also with traffic, because we're relying on traffic studies in order to make a determination. So those are the two, I think, issues that we could probably move forward with and allow for public comment, but, you know, we're also relying on the town's input and our professionals in order to render that opinion. So I think those are the two most innocuous points that we could probably push for on the 25th.
And we're talking about traffic external, because we were going to integrate the operations presentation with the internal traffic, save that for the following meeting?
Would we have opportunity to comment on the internal? Are you planning on making, you know, presentation to Wayne and then getting comments back in time for the 25th?
I'll defer to Pat and Jason, where do we stand on internal traffic? Are we waiting for feedback from them?
There were still a few additional outstanding items we had talked about today on marketing session last week, so there's still additional stock.
You think it's doable, though?
They can be addressed by the tenant, that's what I put in there.
I mean, that's just my thought, Mr. Chairman, on it.
Thank you. Seems reasonable.
And I would, the one I would postpone for sure is, we had Mark Rosenzweig coming next, we'll push him off, okay.
I think that's fine to push him off. I would ask if he has specific concerns, if he could expedite those to you.
Yeah, so the applicant has time to respond before we have meeting the next meeting.
Right, yeah, I think, right...
We're not going to have him here, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, right. Right, I think that's, the message is that the behind-the-scenes work should continue to flow...
Understood.
Rapidly, as appropriate.
Yep.
Okay, so that sounds like a meeting on the 25th, a complete meeting. And then the 9th is going to be an important one, obviously, as well. Sounds like we would then return to landscape on the 9th?
Yes.
Yep.
Operations on the 9th? Or is that, was that slated to be part of the 25th, or...
No, we could do that on the 9th.
We're kind of thinking the internal traffic with operations.
We could recap on the 9th, that sounds fine.
Okay. Think we'll read from Mark at that point? Bring him up for the 9th?
Yes, I think so. John?
Greg, one of the things I wanted to ask the applicant through Angelo or the board is, and we heard a little bit of it from Jason's presentation, which is agreed-upon conditions, in other words, offers that the applicant's making, things that they've committed to do, not within the MOA, that's already committed to, additional commitments. So I would ask through you to Angelo, Angelo, maybe for the May 9th meeting, if you could enumerate those offers that your client's making and get that as part of the record and the board can review this.
I just wanted, well, before I go off, let's, the 9th, sorry, recap of operations, reviewing landscape...
Architectural.
Architectural, that sounds like a full meeting. Maybe we're good for now, or, I mean, I'll also say that I did, I've, you know, made an effort to, well, I guess what I'll just say is that I've reviewed the special permit criteria with members of the board, they're all fully aware of it, but I think I'd like to encourage them to consider them, again, individually in terms of what we've heard and what we haven't heard. And I'm not saying that we haven't, we've heard a lot of things, but just to make sure that we're, in a timely fashion, making any requests for further information that we feel we need to satisfy, to essentially answer the questions of, you know, it's the project meeting, or the applications meeting the criteria outlined in the bylaw. So with that, I guess we could individually make requests through Bill if there are anything, and, you know, with full understanding that we know now what generally will be presented to us over the next two weeks, two meetings, rather, if there is anything else in addition. Beyond that, we should try to speak up as soon as we can.
We welcome specific requests from the board. And if there are issues that you don't believe we presented the information on, we believe, you know, we think that we're being thorough, but if we're missing things that is important to individual board members, please let us know, because we'll certainly address every inquiry that you have. And like you said, Greg, it's better to let us know now and not on the back of the book.
Absolutely.
That's just why we didn't, you know, provide you with something.
So we've got a plan for the next two meetings. I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing for the site plan review and the three special permits.
Second.
To, sorry. April 25th, 7:00 PM in this room.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.